Let's pray together. God, we gather again in this community and an opportunity for business to be transacted and as we manage and steward what belongs to you. And God, I just pray we remember that, that everything that we have, everything that we have personally, everything that we have as a community belongs to you, was given to us by you and we've been ordained as managers. And so I pray your guidance, your wisdom upon these elected officers set forth as they make decisions, as they discern, as they weigh out decisions, and as they make decisions for the betterment of this community. I pray that you would extow them with generosity, benevolence, and justice, mercy, and grace as they transact the business of this community. But I think for these members of the community that are here, that are interested, that buy in and participate in this community, we're blessed and we're thankful that you've given us this place to be a part in the name of Jesus.
United States of America, into the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next time on the business, the approval of the agenda?
Uh, yeah, there's one question, and that's on the second page, under ID twelve presentation. Does it sound that 2014 audit is worth up to 2013?
Who's telling the agenda? I'm voting into the agenda, the case of 2013, President Oliver Arnold, five seconds. Second office speaker, he's discussing. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Next time on the business, the Smith Officer, Oklahoma, for Jacob White. We can add Jacob White, Mr. Stepford.
All right, you raise your hand. I, Jacob White, 2004, swear that I will support the Constitution and the laws of the United States and the state of Missouri. I will appear with my wishes and the ordinance of the City of Grand Valley. I will faithfully discharge all of my duties as a member of the Grand Valley City Department with the permission of the power best may me and city clerk of the City of Grand Valley. I commit to the Grand Valley Department on this twenty eighth April, two thousand and fourteen. Congratulations. Would you like to have a say in this?
Yes.
Okay, come on in.
Can I just say, can I just, your daughter is a daughter. Probably won't say. Okay, next item, let me get a sit, this patient. Have they moved that over? Uh, grabbing system with the address board, Stephen, step forward, podium and microphone. Give us your name and address for the record.
Two thousand three oh nine, Front Street. Um, I'm one of my wonderful tours in the city. I have been asking out emergency numbers with which, um, I had some business asked for. Um, neighborhood lots doesn't have ones, I could cut them off with them. We had some different difficulties, but you know, one thing I've been finding in all our wonderful tour tours, and I'm sorry to say this, is the life of communication. And I wish more of you would speak up to some of the business people when you're running around because they, I even had a gentleman come and ask me if I would get mutually information because he is selling insurance and could cut the price of our insurance for the employees. How he found me, I don't know. But it's, it's bad because I wish they'd find other people too. I mean, it's just kind of the way it is, but I'm grateful they trust me with some of their problems. But I was talking, we need to get the structure on the bottom. We need a newspaper in our town. And I'm sorry, we tried it, but we need to get one because people don't know everything going on. And I can only talk so long, so fast, and to so many people. But, uh, and I would also like to say thank you to all the wonderful people in this room that helped, uh, us on the boat for our backpacks for education.
Any other listeners, address the board?
My name is Janice Brill. I'm tied at one zero three five Southwest East Room. Um, this meeting marked the sixteenth month since I came before you and asked you to consider a, an ordinance limiting payday loans. And recently came across the following statistics. In two thousand and twelve, Kansas had two hundred and seventy-two payday loans. Iowa had two hundred and nine payday loans. Oklahoma had three hundred and forty-nine payday loans. Missouri had nine hundred and eighty-four payday loans. I've presented information to you before how destructive these payday loans can be to communities. Um, I understand that you are hesitant. Uh, I called the city clerk, I don't know who I talked to, it wasn't the city clerk, to ask for advice concerning how I could get a vote on a, an ordinance limiting pay loans in our city, and I received no return call. Um, then my city clerk, too, you are my city council, I don't know how to move forward. Um, sixteen months, I think I think here are six or seven times asking you to make a vote. Uh, I want your advice as to how I can move forward on this issue because it's entirely possible that we wake up one morning and we've got six or eight of them in town because we have no limitation.
Well, if I remember correctly, we were awaiting, since the Blue Springs ordinance, Scott, it confirmed, didn't it?
It did.
That sounds, it was still, it hasn't been resolved.
The, uh, the procedure to move forward, uh, even if you don't want to wait on Blue Springs, is to start a series of public hearings, if there's evidence to be presented regarding destruction of communities. It's really a zoning public safety issue, distance, location, etc. That's, so that's the way we approach it. You have a public hearing, the comments, evidence, uh, evidence in the city, um...
My understanding is you had a workshop probably a year ago. That's why I was hoping that there would be some movement on this issue.
I, I don't think we had a workshop about it, but, um, I, I do want to back up for just a minute and talk about the zoning issue, about distance and location. Um, one of the comments that I recall you saying was that you wanted to see a reduction in the amount of interest that they could charge, and that, I remember you making a statement before, has that changed?
Uh, I, I, uh, we would have no, we, the city would have no control over that. I did, I did provide information, the average amount of interest is four hundred and seventy-three percent. Moving through the state legislature at this moment is, and, uh, is to get rid of all limits on interest. Right now, the limit is, honestly, one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five percent, and they're going to get rid of that. So, these, uh, if we don't do something, they'll, they'll take over this town and they'll suck the economic life out of this town because money will go to payday loans and not be spent at, at Patricia's or other places in our town. I don't, I don't understand why this is such, such a problem with spring, has one, I'm not certain that I think we have done it past one. I, I'm not certain. It's an interesting thing, by the way, that when you call me, some, you call me, can't talk to a real person. It's not possible, but, um, uh, it seems to me, in, in the case of, if I understand that it occurred today and may have been in Blue Springs, and may, uh, they may have been set, I was hoping maybe it would be dismissed. But, um, this is a, this is a, if I understand it correctly, they claim they don't come under the, 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 that, the ordinance. Not that there's anything wrong with ordinance, they just believe that they don't come under the ordinance, they're not a payday loan. They don't see what keeps you from making the taking the vote on payday loan ordinance. Um, and, and I really, I really, I'm literally begging you to advise me how to proceed on this issue. These people are predatory. Um, I, I don't, I, I, does, does it take a petition, and I did it on a ballot? How, how can I make those?
I think the biggest thing we were waiting on was, you know, more likely if we do an ordinance, we base it on other cities. I think we were worried that if we adopt the Blue Springs, then we're setting ourselves up for a lawsuit, so we were waiting to see how Blue Springs is going to be resolved.
And, and, and that was fourteen months ago.
When the city is still...
And, and quite frankly, the last time I was here, I, I said to you that I had served as an alderman of a town much smaller than this, but you literally can't breathe in and out without taking it out, taking the risk of being sued. It's not a reason to advocate leadership and, and fail to do this thing that needs to be done, especially in a community like ours where people are on the edge economically. They'll be tempted, um, because it's a little close and easy, and then they'll be, then they'll be trapped. Um, I, I don't know what else I can say, except come every couple of meetings and nag. I feel, I feel like I've been a nag over the course of all these months. I certainly didn't, that, um, have no response from the council for such a long time. I don't, I don't want to...
Do you even have anything to go on, I mean, to draft an ordinance, and what's your opinion?
Certainly, we can draft an ordinance and have it ready for your review and, uh, but I want to stress that when we go down that road, I want to make sure we have sufficient public hearings, input, statistics, documents, practice studies, uh, those kinds of issues so we have a record wherever we challenge on passing an ordinance, because we have the ability, we have enough evidence and facts for you to pass it, uh, and the determination we need.
If I could just say, I don't see much difference between payday loans and liquor stores. In, in other words, whatever study you did concerning liquor stores that went into passing your ordinance on liquor stores, which you do regulate, uh, could just as easily be applied to payday loans, they have the same effect on the community.
Well, I guess I'll leave that up to the board. If someone wants to contact Alexa about sponsoring the bill and looking at drafting ordinance and soon fills them, you know, sufficient information to go off and we can press that process. If anyone feels like sponsoring that, just can, that's for Alexa, let her know.
Okay, can you help me to address the board?
Yes, I'm Sheila Arnold, three one six, Hope Street, East Ryan Road. And I come to you again to let, let you all know how wonderful our officers were to take care of the kiddos crossing over to the strip mall at Easter time, and they're wonderful Easter bonnets. Uh, we got two officers show up promptly on time, without any rain, thank God, and they escorted them over, and the kids all had sun waving at them, and they were very polite, so kudos to the police department.
Who else says address the board?
Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, the board, Tim Rollins, one one two Southwest, Arkansas Drive, when I was last here, uh, on behalf of Melvin Maureen Moore from the Marrow Star, we were talking about a commission we should get for Mayor's Resource Center, and at that meeting, there was a request for some additional information about, uh, other facilities that were incorporating the equipment that we proposed to use, and so when we left that meeting, we, um, for which you, some examples, and we've done that, I hope it's fair, I'm sure that you have already submitted that you believe it's sort of desire to get back on the agenda, and I'm making a decision on that request to be very important.
Okay, does anyone have, let's see if we put that on, at any meeting? Do we have, Alexa, get that information, you can get off the misleading?
Yeah, I already sent it out. Are you saying there is one of those three, kind of a day, that's...
We gave a little, that was the last time, so after...
You can, you can direct it to three seconds.
We'll have, we'll have to ask someone to make a motion. Let someone make a motion to bring back off scale for the next meeting. Motion from Oliver Deadly, Second Office Speaker. He discussed on the motion, so we remove the item off the table for the next meeting. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Who else says address the board this evening? See none, move on, if it's an agenda?
I move, we accept, accept, accept.
Have motion Oliver, so I take subject, is it, five seconds? Second Officer Johnson, he's discussing. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Next item, is second session for legal action, cause of acts, litigation, two sections, one point, seven, two, one. Oliver, can you vote since it's during the executive session? First Officer Oliver Arnold, five seconds. Second Officer Oliver Heavenly, he's discussing. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Who else says address the board this evening? See none, move on, if it's an agenda?
I move, we accept, accept, accept.
Have motion Oliver, so I take subject, is it, five seconds? Second Officer Johnson, he's discussing. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Next item, is second session for legal action, cause of acts, litigation, two sections, one point, seven, two, one. Oliver, can you vote since it's during the executive session? First Officer Oliver Arnold, five seconds. Second Officer Oliver Heavenly, he's discussing. See none, all fair, Tuesday, aye. All both same time. Oliver Arnold?
Yes.
Oliver West?
Yes.
Oliver Heavenly?
Yes.
Oliver Staker?
Yes.
Oliver Johnson?
Yes.
All right, during the next discussion. Can you call him back to order? Uh, next time, we have a discussion, we have update for the municipal needs permit for a race track, race area, and...
Yes, um, since last meeting, I, we sent notice of the hearing, which will be conducted by the board, Mayor and Board, uh, like you, three point five, uh, uh, notice went out last week, and Mr. Shroud, the city's, uh, company, and the other, uh, is part of the municipal needs for that. We are in the process of working with, um, Mr. Shroud to commission a sound study to see what the current noise levels are during racetrack. We've given him, uh, himself, he's made fifteen, pick that study, three of that's all the conditions that this can have, so, um, we will be, mine and our, we're together, we don't hear from Mr. Shroud, we're as aware as we can, we're going to get it suggested, um, sound engineers, we say, it would be, it gives Mr. Shroud best interest to get the study, uh, a reputable engineer, because that's one of the conditions of the permanent harm, that's what we're on.
Someone can take advantage, Shroud?
Yeah, I guess, uh, the thing that, yeah, we've been negotiating with, you know, we've had all these meetings, uh, last fall, uh, we came to you guys, we had a meeting up here, and they said we were going to go to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and then we would go to some kind of zoning board, and then between those two meetings, we would try to come up with some compromises, uh, for the racetrack. And I guess, you know, uh, it hasn't happened like it was laid out. I know, uh, you know, Scott got a second meeting, thought it was stonewalling, and I was waiting for this second meeting to happen, and it still hasn't happened. So, I guess I'm not quite sure why, where everything got derailed in this whole process, uh, just from my personal opinion, it looks like these decisions are already debated, to cancel the special use permit and shut the track down. Uh, you know, I've been to the meetings they had for the expansion of the city, there's nothing on that expansion program about racetrack anywhere, you know, no mention of it at all, uh, you know, and I just, uh, seems like we were wasting a lot of time for nothing, you know, uh, where does the process get derailed at, I guess, would be one of my questions. Uh, but what's happened, you know, whenever I talk to you guys, uh, you instructed us to compromise, and honestly, we've come up with a bunch of compromises, we cut back our schedule, uh, working on the month results, you know, we, I think this year, I don't know, the, what they told me, they hadn't had any complaints this year, is what I've been told, you know, there's something else out there, you know, we've increased for time, so, uh, evidently, we're doing something right. But yet, everything's proceeding with the cancellation of the conditional use permit, which I thought these negotiations were in place to, uh, come up with compromise before it's that point, like me, that everything we've done has been just a waste of time, you know, on both our parts, not just my part, and your guys' part too, you know, uh, I'm not sure at what point, uh, it got derailed. It makes me look like that I'm the guy stonewalling, whenever I was waiting for the second meeting to happen, but it never did happen. So, I mean, I guess my question to you guys is, I mean, I've been contacted by the city, you know, about selling my property, uh, to someone, I, they said they were contacted by someone wanting to buy the property out there, uh, I'm not sure why they called the city instead of me. Uh, I called the person that David Flicks, who it was, and I said, you know, if you want to purchase my property, I'd be willing to talk to you. I've known David Flick since I was in the dairy business about body capture, so it's not like he doesn't know me. And Mr. Flick told me that he did not contact the city, the city contacted him once he provided the property. So, I'm not quite sure why the city's brokering my property, again, other than, it's already been determined that the racetrack's not the future, so, again, my question, a couple of them, what happened to the zoning meetings, that, you know, again, you said, and we had these two meetings, look at what both meetings came out of, and look at some kind of a compromise and bring back to the board to let you guys see what we could do, you know, and that, for whatever hasn't happened, you know, uh, and again, why is the city brokering my property?
Well, uh, that's the first one, and I think we got, you know, this is a cross on that, and we had the first, the meeting over at the City Center, went in that board, made a recommendation of what they would like to see happen. When the plan of zoning came in, they, they would have came in once we would have had a compromise to CUP, then it would, we would actually have to go to plan zone before we come up with a vote. I think that's where we got this stuff, was we needed to have the compromise, the compromise on the CUP before we went to plan and zoning. I apologize if we got, you know, cross on that, where he thought we need to go to that board first, before we did the compromise, and so forth. So, that, that's where that meeting with plan and zoning came into play. And, I mean, and as for, you know, the city price is down, I mean, my understanding, this is, that's what I'm wrong, but we're, I mean, we still do not have to hold that hearing if we can come to a compromise before we end on the CUP, correct?
That's correct, that's exactly...
It's gonna take an hour to...
Well, I mean, we're compromising left. I mean, we've had four meetings, we've cut the schedule back, you know, we... There isn't any complaint right now?
And I think we're, we're in the CUP, I believe, is what we're waiting on now. I mean, you, you made those things, but it's not in the CUP for state, I think that's what we're waiting on now, is to do those things.
I guess I still don't understand, I mean, there is, the city has compromised nothing at all, you know, all the compromising comes from my end, but the city's side, unless I miss something, does the city give it any word at all?
Mr. Shroud, I'm going to get into the discussion of public aid in an area, you know, which you're represented by council. You think you come in here and make statements to the board that, um, is already predetermined as a new, which is not true.
Well, they've authorized to cancel the meetings and amp up condition of use permit.
Now, they, they set a hearing, they consider the rotation, that's what, that's what the statute of ordinance provides, and, you know, we, we asked for a sound study, we don't know, uh, we haven't seen any evidence of what steps have been taken, mufflers, uh, to control the sound. I haven't heard any response about when you're going to do a sound study, which is required. So, the board is not in a, in a compromising, negotiating posture to view. The Delaware, cities represented, they're going to make a decision, if we can come to some kind of agreement on a business district, or that, uh, changes that will directly impact sound, then that's what's going to happen.
Okay, let's assume, and I realize... Mr. Shroud, I'm not... Okay, all right, okay, I'm, okay. Again, I, the, why is the city brokering my property? That would be my last question to you guys. Why are you guys out calling people to sell my property?
And that being, and I would ask, is this a test, or not, or are we...
Uh, next item, free business, see none, move on to your presentation. That 2013 audit report from Shroud D. E. Company?
Good evening, Mr. Rear, and I'm the member of all of them. My name is Bruce Keener, and I'm a partner of Shroud D. E. Company, and we serve as your city representative auditing firm, and we have had, uh, the opportunity to let me present to you the, the results of the audit the past couple of years, uh, but this evening, my partner, my brocha, um, is with me, and he might, uh, carry a work, more, probably more than I love this year, because there's some personal sort of changes on my partner, and going, uh, appropriate, um, that are, he shared with you the audits and the results of the audit, so, I'm a partner, my brocha.
Good evening, members of the board. I'm glad to face your 2013 annual, uh, identity annual audit fifty-five with the strong governance and jurisdictions, and generally to, uh, for, to the citizens, and, uh, to go take accountability out of this. So, this year is the third year that our firm has worked with the city, and the audit was issued last week, and so hopefully, if you have a chance to get it tonight, or we have preliminary copies sent out, it's... I'll just point out some, at a high level, you know, as I make it my, my interest, I'll go through the statements briefly. Certainly you can stop at any time as to any question, although I don't want you to interrupt it or even wait for this so long, and that's fine as well. 2013, our overall impression was that the city had, that it was a conservative year, it had a total conservatism, the four of five major funds, the expenditures and the high student loans, the city had no new debt in 2013, you simply paid on your old debt. But perhaps the crown of the financial year was that the city was able to refinance two bond issues netting about a million dollars of future debt service savings, so that is certainly a plus for the city and the citizens. The water fund last year was led mild, the year before that, if you recall, was hot and dry, so two years ago, the UCF water business last year wasn't quite as good. So, the water fund did have income from operations, but if you took out the, the interest and the tax service cost, it had about eighty-three thousand dollars lost every year. Other accounting changes, the city did write off its foundation costs, those are changes in some cases, and also changed its policy on accounting for property tax revenues whereby the revenues that you receive in November, December, you, the furry, don't take it to income this year, it doesn't pull over the city's cash, but it's simply a diversion for the next budget year. Those were the main highlights. I'll briefly go through the statements. Pages four. Page fourteen, is the city's management discussion analysis, similar to a president's address in the public SEC for a year-end report. It gives an overview from a, more of a narrative perspective about the financial affairs of the city, and I didn't have a chance to read yet. I would encourage you to do that, does give some good information, and this is a very good study. Page one and three is the city's independent audit report, as you have received the past Pages five, um, page five is the state's net position. Again, you have the thirty-fourth in the round for about thirty, about ten years now, and this statement attempts to consolidate the city's assets and liabilities, showing a warm statement, those who have some experience with commercial accounting, they can consolidate the, but it records all the assets and attempts to record all the liabilities, the name of the structure and give the net position at the end of the year. On page five, two items note, you'll see the deferred inflows, that's the property tax, as I mentioned before, and then also the unrestricted negative four million, that is a result of your mid, the TIP bonds whereby, in most cases, when the city issues debt, you can asset in return, you can book on the upside, but in this case, you can't book an asset receivable for future economic activity taxes or sales taxes, so results in debt that you're under strict, and we have several cities in that case, but that should work itself out over time with those taxes. Page seven is the consolidated, or the statement activities. Detailed by function. And then revenue to the bottom, consolidated change in net position of one point two million on the governmental activities, and that's mostly the result of adding back the debt Page seven starts the city's major funds, the balance sheet for those funds. The general fund are transportation, G O bond and debt service of the major state Page nine is the state of revenue expenditures for those major funds. Page nine shows net changes to my house, about third line from the audit, sure, what I mentioned earlier, the four funds, uh, major funds outside of the debt service, these revenues, they say that the expenditures, it's in the debt service because of refinancing. Page eleven is the project fund balance sheet. Page twelve is the operating statement. Page thirteen is the project fund cash flow statement. After that, we are into notes describing accounting policies, some of those you might find interest. Note four on page twenty-six, detailed capital assets and the activity per year additions and motions, both of those governmental funds, you know, page twenty-seven, those are project And after that, the city's pension funding loggers, the city is funded in its pension obligations, that's in the news right now because a lot of municipal are struck on funding pension allegations, the city is correct laws, pension allegations. Page thirty is the long-term debt per year, shows the addition and dilution, again, we have new city debt, we paid on our old debt, and we also refinanced, you know, our general obligation bonds, and then also our rent bond and project fund. Page thirty-five, the city does have, second, third paragraph, the city does have some bond covenants, that's a movement that has to comply with principally a rate covenant, and if you require deposits in the debt service reserve account and appreciation of place and accounts, and as such, that's one of the items people have got in the city, whether we can find with those requirements. Page thirty-six, the advanced funding, you've seen the refunding the two thousand, uh, the two thousand thirteen revenue bond, that is about five fifteen thousand, and the general obligation bond about five sixty-nine dollars, so it's a good deal. Page thirty-seven, the ten tax revenues, if you're interested in detailing some of the city's tax, the city's tax revenues, property, sales, others. Page thirty-nine was your fund transaction of the transportation amount. Page twelve, the government revenue, city receives a lease grant, also some sale taxes to be able to use in the state. Page forty-one, compliance and accountability. The city did have some overruns of its budget income fund, the six million fixed out of debt service, and that was because the city did not budget its refunding. So, on the one hand, the city, refund is going to deal for the city, on the other hand, the city just takes the things, I'm going to study to reflect that for a year, and that's a cause of overload. There is a corresponding revenue of incoming cash from it, but... Forty-two listing various commitments. Forty-three, segment information for the enterprise funds, there are some estimates you need to remember from the orders, so... The water share within that, in that loss, and that's principal of the depreciation After that, we have the city's budget actuals, starting with page forty-eight for the major funds, combined statements, statement for the non-major funds, page fifty-three, and then the remaining budget actual, but they're not major funds. Overall, the found records were in very good order, the city staff was extremely cooperative, the audits, the common room margin equated at this time for us, and so one way we're able to get that done, maybe the equal is because the, the cooperation with the citizens and city staff. Going forward, the city does have some challenges, principal coming up on your, will be the mid notes, refinancing those, and of course, finding revenue streams to pay the debt, assuming the special segments come out, and then also TIP obligations, considering the program you're following, that is a good thing, you're not giving a proactive and cumulative resources in case you have a contingency, there's those. And then also on the water and sewer funds, again, the race, we always encourage our cities to look at your race, try to adjust them smaller on an annual basis, first, wait in years and then go in a year, but the race, uh, you need to constantly monitor because the city does have some stringent rate covenant requirements, they did pass those in two thirteen, but again, as I mentioned earlier, we did have a little loss from here. Other than that, if anyone has anything the city, the board may have. We certainly do appreciate the relationship.
Thank you. If anyone has anything, then we'll be contacted. That'll be fine. All right, thank you.
Okay, next on agenda is first round of ordinances, item eight, page thirteen.
This is, uh, bill fourteen dash seven, on the agenda for first and second readings, the E O S and ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri on April eighth, two thousand fourteen. First reading, ordinance for bill number fourteen zero seven, which would be ordinance twenty-three twenty-nine.
Bill number B one four zero seven for the first reading, second reading.
I most of all would still like to approve bill E fourteen dash zero seven for a first reading, bring it back by power for a second reading, five seconds.
Right.
Second on the paper, any discussion?
Um, just to inform the board that, I know that you typically don't like a double reading, but, um, come on, I got one right here. Well, I'm a little lovey-ha, yeah.
And, uh, if you think about it, yeah. If not, all pairs to the eye, all votes take time.
Second reading, bill fourteen dash zero seven, which would be ordinance twenty-three twenty-nine, ordinance declaring the results of the general election held in the city of Grand Valley, Missouri on April eighth, two thousand fourteen. Ordnance twenty-three twenty-nine.
I believe that we accept bill number B one four, that zero seven for a second reading, make it work.
I most of all would still like to approve bill E one four dash zero seven for a second reading, make the ordinance twenty-three twenty-nine, five seconds.
Right.
Second on the paper, any discussion? Done, all pairs to the eye.
Aye.
All votes take time.
Arnold?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Chapler?
Yes.
Headley?
Yes.
Scully?
Yes.
West?
Zero there.
Next on agenda is elected official oath of office.
Would you like to do this individually or the group? Group?
Mine being.
I would like, I would give you two an opportunity to come down and, um, and do family photos, because I think some of your family is somebody that's here. Don't give the president a degree, very opportunity. Come on, baby.
Truly, you guys smile.
Are you ready? Oh, I hope. I got that power. Um, can you control your eyes? No. All right, this is great, very handy stuff. I solemnly swear in affirm.
I solemnly swear in affirm.
That I possess the qualification.
I possess the qualification.
Prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the off, office of alderman.
Office of alderman.
And that I support.
And that I support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions of state statutes.
The provisions of state statutes.
Affecting fourth class cities.
Affecting fourth class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
The city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully.
I shall faithfully.
Conduct myself in office.
Conduct myself in office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Which comes into my possession.
So help me God.
So, how do you...
By the purpose to me at City Court of the city of Grand Valley, I commission you as alderman of the city of Grand Valley, twenty-eight day of April, two thousand fourteen. Congratulations. Do you like, boy, you're down in front, um, would you like that family members part for you to do family photos? You can say yes or no, it's...
I'm a waiter, yeah.
Well... Michael, would you like to come home?
Home?
See, I'm turning down the pack broke, I'm picking on you, Mike. If you would like to stand in front of the flag or home, I would be good. Yeah, I'd be good.
What else you looking at?
He's giving a page three, we'll not give Dale a straight line, he's making... Are you ready? Is that your ring? I, Mike Todd.
I, Mike Todd.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
Do solemnly swear in affirm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
The qualification.
The qualification.
For prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of mayor.
For the office of mayor.
And that I support.
And that I support.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
The state of Missouri.
The provisions.
The provisions.
Of the state, of state statutes.
State statutes.
Affecting fourth class cities.
Affecting fourth class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
Of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
The city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully... See, I'm turning out the back rope and picking on Mike.
I want it to sound like it.
If you would like to stand in front of the flag or home, I would be glad to. Yeah. It's true, Mike.
What else you looking at?
Yep. He's giving a page where he wants to not give Dale a straight line. Mike. Are you ready? Is that your ring? I might touch.
I might touch.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
the qualifications.
Qualifications.
prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of mayor.
For the office of mayor.
And that I support.
And that I support.
the Constitution.
Constitution.
of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions.
The provisions.
of state statutes.
Of state statutes.
affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
in and out of office.
In and out of office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Comes into my possession.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the purpose to me at City Court of the city of Grand Valley, I commission you as mayor of the Grand Valley, Missouri on the twenty-eighth day of April, two thousand and fourteen. Congratulations. Do you like to go your down in front and like that family members part for your family photos? You can say yes or no.
I'm a maker.
Well. Michael, would you like to come home?
Never.
See, I'm turning out the back rope and picking on Mike.
I want it to sound like it.
If you would like to stand in front of the flag or home, I would be glad to. Yeah. It's true, Mike.
What else you looking at?
Yep. He's giving a page where he wants to not give Dale a straight line. Mike. Are you ready? Is that your ring? I might touch.
I might touch.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
Do solemnly swear and affirm.
That I possess.
That I possess.
the qualifications.
Qualifications.
prescribed by law.
Prescribed by law.
For the office of mayor.
For the office of mayor.
And that I support.
And that I support.
the Constitution.
Constitution.
of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the state of Missouri.
And the state of Missouri.
The provisions.
The provisions.
of state statutes.
Of state statutes.
affecting fourth-class cities.
Affecting fourth-class cities.
And the ordinances.
And the ordinances.
of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
Of the city of Grand Valley, Missouri.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
I shall faithfully conduct myself.
in and out of office.
In and out of office.
And respect the competences.
And respect the competences.
And information.
And information.
Which comes into my possession.
Comes into my possession.
So help me God.
So help me God.
By the purpose to me at City Court of the city of Grand Valley, I commission you as mayor of the Grand Valley, Missouri on the twenty-eighth day of April, two thousand and fourteen. Congratulations.
Okay, next up is considered agenda for April all forty-eight. I have most of all, we're getting considered agenda. I have most of all, we're getting considered agenda. I have a second.
Second.
Second on the headly. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, just to remind you, this actually started back in two thousand and twelve when the board approved the rezoning from Inwood Line Industrial to the R two duplex. The thought process with planning and zoning developer and board board at that time was that this would provide a buffer between the residential and industrial areas in the eastern city industrial place. The planning and zoning commission had a clear, clear period of duration.
Do you have any other discussion?
Do you have anything to add to this word?
This is duplex construction. We're doing a group of duplexes top of Blue Springs right now. Stack frame, four plant or thirteen hundred square foot. Down here, they're going to hit between ninety and ninety-fifty aside. Blue Springs, we're getting about a thousand dollar size. They're kind of upscale type, stucco, stone fronts, full sided, vinyl siding, full maintenance. They've been accepted up there at Blue Springs. They're very five different elevations, so you're not just looking like the same thing down the street. You get a chance to buy or sell actually in the Blue Springs, he or we at some of these top of Blue Springs on the inside. And we have, we built twenty in there, we're starting twenty.
Do you have anything to say?
About seventy. It's what they're thinking.
All pairs to the eye. All votes at the time.
Six zero, first reading. Resolution fourteen dash one-two. Fourteen twenty-two. Listen, that's standing. Fourteen dash, resolution fourteen dash twenty-two is a resolution authorized by the city administrator to enter into a new extension agreement with Midwest Pool Management for the management of the Grand Valley Quonix Center as approved in two thousand and fourteen budget. Resolution R fourteen dash twenty-two.
Mayor, I believe we accept resolution fourteen dash twenty-two as ready.
I have most of all, we're getting this approved resolution R fourteen dash twenty-two. Five seconds.
Second.
Second on the scully. Any discussion?
This is the last year of three-year contract.
Yes.
Yes. That's true. Do we go back out for an R P and let's spread it?
Do you have anything? And then all pairs to the eye.
Aye.
All votes at the time.
Six zero. Bill number R fourteen dash twenty-three, a resolution authorized by the city administrator to enter into a agreement with net standard to virtualize the city of Grand Valley, Missouri's physical servers. Resolution R fourteen dash twenty-three.
Mayor, I believe we accept R fourteen dash twenty-three as ready.
I have most of all, we're getting this approved resolution R fourteen dash twenty-three. Five seconds. Second on the scully. Any discussion?
Probably if you write on the, let our head there, just the administrator that's not standard. Okay. It just says, the authorization authorized by the city of Grand Valley with net standard doesn't really, you know, entering into the, you know.
On the resolution itself or on the bill?
Yeah, in the bowl of resolutions.
Just on, I get your own, okay, in the resolution.
To end it. On the title itself?
Yeah. Yeah. It just says authorized by the city of Grand Valley with net standard, it doesn't say entering into the.
No, I'm not sure.
I don't want to even, I have to.
Oh, okay.
Do you have anything else?
Resolution itself. Read correctly.
Do you have anything to add, Alvin?
No, this is what we discussed, actually asked all of the headly to review this with the faculty background. We were able to answer, do the questions that we had, pretty basic, trying to infer costs to go the first type base versus the pervert. And then we, within the rest.
Additional, all pairs to the eye.
Aye.
All votes at the time.
Six zero.
Next up, the city attorney's reports.
That is a report.
Next up, the city administrator's staff reports.
Yes, we have a few staff reports this evening. And.
Mayor, board board tonight have a few things tonight. One is to just follow up with the facility use contract, creating a light association. It was actually slated to go before the association was passed meeting in April. Unfortunately, they did not have enough members present to form and were able to have the meeting. I can tell you, I've been in conversation with the president, vice president, board, secretary since then, and they have been reviewing the document to where they'll be in a position next week, and they're mainly going to approve the contract. We are in essence and principle on the same page and moving forward with it, and I think we're pretty much there, other than getting the entire board and GBA together to vote on it and agree to it and sign it. So that's where we're at right now. Again, really the only major change in the contract was the output that they'd be coming to the city, and we agreed that instead of calculating twenty-five percent of all the facilities cost over the course of the year, for all of their sports that are on city facilities, which is somewhat of a challenge, we are actually going to receive a portion of registration to per child, per sport that is on city facilities, which weighs two dollars per kid, which is going to make it a lot easier to track. GBA has given me access to their online system where I can track their registration numbers and be able to make those payments as each league ends throughout the course of the year. So we are getting there, and I'm hopeful that at the next GBA meeting in May, first Wednesday in May, we'll have a sign, and at that point in time, we'll bring it forward for approval. Another one, I just updated our community center roof. As I stated last week, we had, the community center, as well as the three that were built adjacent to the quadic center, were shingles and everything to remove, and they have since replaced the roof, which you call bad decking, ice water shield, the shingles themselves as well, and that's been completed on all the buildings over there. Right now, it's to the point where it's just a lot of the mental work that has to deal with the flashings and some of the pins that come up through the roof, and what the gutters announced about they're going to be fixed. So we're moving along really well. We did, we were impacted with some inclement weather last week, delay of two things, but overall, we're in pretty good shape. Again, the goal is to have this completed before we need time to start getting our pool ready for the upcoming season. And again, the brunt of the debris is here and tear off and replacement. We've already started cleaning up the pool and training it to where we can start as Washington can get prepared to paint and rebuild it. So we are in good shape. So far, I know this is a good week, there's forecasted plenty of inclement weather, so we'll see how this week holds, but right now, we're on our time line for the roof.
Were any of the old ones on the decking?
Uh, no.
I'd like to recognize Shannon and the staff for the work to get the facility use agreement completed with GBA, been a long, continuous adventure, sadly, and it's a patient, it's a patient who'd be recognized for pushing that through and getting it done.
Hannah?
Yes, Mayor Board. The past weekend, we had our thirty annual shredding event as well as our prescription drugs turn in. Despite the bad weather, we had a excellent turnout again as usual. On the poundage for the amount of things that were shredded, items that were shredded, we had thirty-four hundred pounds, which was about eight hundred pounds more than we did last year. And we collected about a hundred and twenty-three pounds of prescription drugs, which was actually about fifty pounds less. So apparently, a lot of people gave it to us last year, and didn't have as much this year. But anyways, and of course, we wouldn't have a successful event, wouldn't for our bits. Jerry Moran, one of them, we always recommend, we had about, I think we had ten more bits there, home affairs and police services, and Dave sat out there through three hours of rain, you know, and did a technical job and helped everybody out, and just thank him immensely for everything they did. Yes, thank you very much. So again, another successful event, and we'll have it again next year. So thank you very much, and everybody that helped us out with everything they do for the event.
There are two dates that I know that you were so excited about, the members being a lot of tonight, so I think that I think we'll talk about his health insurance. So my hope is we seem to be health insurance members, we're now rates on Venus today, so we have some meetings set up to discuss what our next steps are and how we like to proceed and do all of the work sessions. So my hope is to have a work session that our first meeting in May, at the very latest, our second meeting in May, and those dates are available, and we're not getting on. So it looks like May twelfth that is, hoping to have a work session at six o'clock that we need to discuss our rates, and then give them a pass and get the information to our employees and time for the new date to have a work. Have a work.
Jamie?
Yes.
Six o'clock or whatever. Either mess, either have to mess the meeting or have to do something different later, seven, seven thirty.
Okay. Hi, there are two things. We could look at an alternate day to set that, or do it, if you try to see how that meeting looks, if it's a light meeting, maybe we could do it again.
It's just six o'clock is not going to work for me, because right now, depending on where I go on the Gardener, it takes me an hour just getting on the Gardener, and that puts me on six thirty, if I don't get stuck in traffic like I did tonight. Seven o'clock is, I mean, that's the impression, I believe that at seven o'clock.
Back to the board.
Do we have any additional to that night?
Aye.
How was it?
Yeah.
Was it not light?
Yeah. Let's see how, still light today, did I understand a week before, and what will be how we're looking that week? If we can, if it looks like, we'll go ahead and have a meeting, if it's not, we'll get an email from the afternoon, so an alternate date to have a workshop, maybe another day or something. Does that work for you?
Are we not going to have a second meeting, maybe this is all day?
Well, and that's the next thing to talk about is, do you want to do it on that Tuesday, or do you want to see how that looks and maybe not have a second meeting? That's shorter than what we're required to have one day.
Can they all day together for the Monday before?
Well, that's that May twelfth.
Oh, because it would be nineteen?
Fourteen.
Some of the nineteen.
We're doing the nineteen, that one for a minute.
I mean, if that, if that night was light, if that night was good, that night was too often. Like, why can't you give me enough time, Jamie, to get it out for enrollment?
Oh.
You were going to go second week into, second week into May anyway.
Well, my plan that night was to have the workshop, you have to call a special meeting. My plan is to have the work session, and I have the ordinance on the agenda, so we can put the information out front of us. And the pastor, we get asked for our quote, he said, what's in the moment, and we have to give the information, and things that are staying in.
The board may want to have a separate work session, and if they want to vote on that, say nine, you see it.
May I suggest possibly the fifth, or the sixth? Do you have any support on the sixth?
If you did before that meeting, did you consent on the agenda voting at nine? How many have a work session at nine, and then vote on ten nine?
And work session to after eight.
We had to have a four.
We need a work session on the fifth at seven, now we don't have to vote on, and we can vote on twelve.
We can pop those through, we may know the nature available, we made this, I'm not quite sure if we are, or can see this type of double that we've had, or should all have the check it done? And then we get them all kind of a day, and then we back to all of you. I'm sorry.
Uh, I, we've got an special date on lock and he makes the, uh, whole team at that. And he wanted to say, uh, he's in the office. For us and, um, for his administration. He had provided us with several dates, um, several, he's given us the dates and then he's available for the workshop, uh, session. Um, June twelve, thirteen through fourteen, and it'll be again the two days that we have, and June twenty-eight through twenty-seven. June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh and June twelve, thirteen through fourteen.
I presume it'll be easy to even like you did the last one.
Um, it's just timing, you know, the day we build that.
Thirteen, thirteen, fourteen.
Well, the fourteenth, yeah, I'm, I'm thinking the fourteenth, we were due to do the thirteen, fourteen, to do the Friday evening, Saturday morning.
Um, that's a far out from you, I would say.
And the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh is the Thursday, Friday is the Saturday morning, yeah.
Don't have to have that.
So, we're doing that twelve, thirteen, thirteen, fourteen? No? I don't have any further dates, so I'll have to have them. She did a money. And I'll be back with you all, what's more dates of the right.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Ford, I have three quick things for you. Uh, Saturday, May thirty-first is our annual citywide cleanup. We're gonna be partnering again with Restor, Habitat, and Humanity. Uh, you'll be able to bring items that, uh, typically we try to do that along with something from the citywide garage sale, all of that. So, you can bring, uh, mattresses, that sort of stuff, but we don't accept any hazardous waste at that event. In order for, uh, somebody to have a senior curbside pickup, they need to contact, uh, Danny Love at City Hall, uh, to schedule that. Um, the other thing we have, the Thursday, June nineteenth is our eighth annual community development event. The annual public education event that we have always go again and, um, a lot of fun stuff for families, raffles, that sort of thing. So, if you have any questions about that, I can get you more information. We've included that information in the war bills. Uh, it's been advertised fairly well, so hopefully we'll have a, a good turnout for both of them again. The last thing that I wanted to do is let you know, I returned from vacation today and I had a, a package in the mail and there was a letter in there. Um, there was a letter in there and I'll just, I'll read it to you. It, you know, I know that a lot of times we get kudos for our staff from you guys and your aldermen comments, but this was, um, something exceptional in my mind that, that was unprompted and, and a nice, a nice vacation. It says, Dear Mr. Hunt, we want to express our appreciation for the behind the scenes work your employees do all year long in Green Valley. Because of your department, our family enjoys clean and well-kept parks in the summer, which I have to, technically, and roads quickly cleared a moment or after snowfall. Uh, please share these scholar dollar cards with your employees as a way to express our appreciation and benefit for local businesses. Considerably happy G V residents. Uh, in the package they included twenty-three of the, it used to be called the major saver cards, uh, for dollar scholar cards now. And they asked for us to send those around to all of our, our employees. So, uh, everybody in community development, all of my staff and then, uh, Shannon's maintenance. Shannon's maintenance. So, I wanted to share that with you. Typically the compliment, they go on a balcony and come from you, so I'll share that, uh, that's from happy Green Valley residents, so. You please forward that to me when it's ready.
Say what is mine. And speaking of staff appreciation, the last thing that we have for tonight is I wanna let you know that we are doing our annual staff appreciation on, um, May eighth, is that what it is, is that a shape or? So, um, hopefully all of you can come and join us and we'll be having hamburgers and hot dogs and, uh, just some good munchies and, uh, a few days to, uh, thank our staff for all the. And I'll talk to you.
Uh, next up then, Ford Holden reporting on it, uh, Alden Johnson. On the paper.
Uh, just got a couple things there. Um, one, Green Valley's most recently the high school got a, uh, outstanding rating, you know, with Mr. Coleman speaking on behalf of, uh, I, uh, accidentally left my numbers to come, so I'm a little, if he doesn't mind, uh, it'd be great to argue.
Yeah, the, uh, I'm proud to say that the, the school district, the, uh, it's right here. The, the awards, or it's not really awards, they, they took the top forty best, I think the very high school or college prep. We finished over forty-three out of the top forty. In our area, um, there were only five other schools to finish ahead of us. Blue Springs was one, we finished ahead of Blue Springs South, all the, uh, we sold the schools. Um, Lincoln Prep finished ahead of us, Bailey finished ahead of us, Hart Hill, they both part, I think, were the five that finished ahead of us. But a very, very good award to show that we're doing a good job for our kids and getting prepared for college. So, we're very proud of that.
Wasn't it, wasn't it four hundred and eight, we came in twenty-third?
Well, there's, this is just the top forty, there's, out of all the school districts in the state of Missouri, and I don't, you know, I don't know if there are, there are four of them from my school districts in the state of Missouri.
I, I love that.
This is a, this includes every school district in the state of Missouri.
Great job.
Yeah, it's a very good award.
Um, I'd like to, I'd like to look at four-year terms and elections instead of two, if you can, if you can put something together for the board to look at in the near future, for, for that coming election down the road. I mean, you run every few years and that's got, I'd be curious to know the cost, it's costing the city to do that. I'd like to see it's given four-year terms instead of two-year terms. Just the units of information.
Yeah, I think we know that too.
Uh, now, that's all I have.
On the spelling?
Nothing to say.
On the N L's? On what? On our.
Uh, I've got a couple things. On the accounting, we usually get a breakdown of the general account expenditures. I must send stuff to get down all of the, uh, insurance payments and orders and that type of stuff. It's all payable, uh, related and so forth. And I, it was, it was not something we can get into deep, but on that, I know when we used to get the general account spending, it's all how money was being spent on day-to-day operations and it'll be a pass rush for it, we used to.
We, we do the account table, so what we're spending at each time, every, every meeting in the account table, anything we spend or detect we cut are in that account table report.
Well, what, what I, what we used to get that was all filtered out in one report, so it's involved in different accounts separated out.
We can, we can.
Which makes it harder to, to follow that.
We can run a couple and see which one format you like and pay over the minutes.
At the last meeting, we got the sheet that talked about the project we did for two thousand thirteen. And the last item on there, I just, uh, at the meeting, we got time to say that. Uh, in reviewing it, the capicots were one of the issues that we don't do. It states in here that the reasonable remains warranted, uh, the condition, uh, recommendation, he. My feeling is that we approved this position on the capicots, that it would be self-supporting due to the, directly brought in from the summons that they were issued. And I think we approved, we need to review that and see what that accounting shows as to what the position was, self-sustaining or, you know, whether or not, as we talked about, if it wasn't self-sustaining, that it didn't, uh, do attrition and we resort back into the chart, we just draw that on the position. So, I think we need to have that account.
Yeah, and we can see that, that several, that some of those were report dates, they're in there, so I think we've got enough.
Yeah, somewhere you gotta draw a line and just take.
Yeah, exactly.
So, I'd like to see something on that in the near future.
Yes.
That position also, if you have some discussion with the T U B A and sort of, uh, package plan for the rest of the police officers we talked about in the last one.
Fair. Speaking more on Alden and Alden, uh, traffic cop. I actually took you up on your, uh, invite to come down to, uh, traffic on, uh, court light. Just so happen though, you guys done, my, my gosh, you're, I got here a little bit before eight o'clock, but there was something was, I got to speak to the judge on, on the traffic cop. And I kinda was asking his thoughts about it and he, he, uh, you know, he thought it was a good, good fit. And, uh, we, we, uh, he took a lot of good information, but, you know, I hopefully can make, make it one night. But, uh, I just want to let you know, I did come down here and I, I did miss, I did miss court day. I, I, so somebody, you know, I didn't.
That's rare, I mean, we have before eight o'clock.
What's that?
That's very rare. Now, I mean, we have a night, we have before eight o'clock.
I, I, uh, I thought, well, those two, because I've been down if you guys missed court, my, my, that's what, that's what the judge said was, you know, I came in at eight o'clock, you guys were done, but I guess very, very, it's happened. So, anyway, I just want to, I want to.
Next time, jury support, uh, that additional report. Uh, next time the victim session, we believe we have a new victim session for personnel. Uh, that, that's why I'm here to go to the district, uh, during the victim session, I have a patient for personnel. What's on the paper, that's second? Second on the spelling. Any discussion? Next, all pairs please, the eye. All votes in time? On Arnold?
Yes.
On what?